Sometimes it's a lonely place in here. It's Monday, April 22nd, 2024, and time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. And ask the clerk to certify the meeting notes.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you stand and join me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to our next item, which is changes on the agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge a tragedy that happened in our community with one of our law enforcement officers. Deputy Tobin Bolter lost his life performing his duties, stopping someone who obviously needed to be stopped. And in so doing, he lost his life. And for another reason, we have a number of our officers for Garden City in the room tonight. And I just hope we can all remain mindful of the things we take for granted every day when we go to the grocery store without worrying about our safety or knowing that in this world there are folks that don't have our best interest at heart, and we have people out there to stand in the gap for us. So if you would, join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Tobin Bolter. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move to changes on the agenda. Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I motion approve the consent agenda as written.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, special business. Item number one. We have a proclamation to honor Kevin Sullivan. He's our Special Olympics torch carrying champion. And we have a couple of council members that are very familiar with Kevin. And I've asked our council president, Councilmember Page, if he would honor me and Kevin and read the proclamation.
The Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics is the largest public awareness vehicle and grassroots fundraiser for Special Olympics, known as Guardians of the Flame. Law enforcement members and Special Olympics athletes will be carrying the flame of hope throughout the state, symbolizing courage and celebration of diversity, uniting communities. And whereas Kevin Sullivan has lived his entire 19, almost 20 years with his parents in Riverside Village in Garden City, he respects and admires law enforcement officers. And whereas Kevin is very dedicated to physical fitness and has played baseball, basketball, and flag football. And whereas Kevin will help with carrying the flame of hope to 14 Idaho cities, April 29th through May 3rd, for the law enforcement torch run. And whereas Kevin went to Florida for the 2022 National Special Olympics Games as an ambassador for the youth leadership experience. And whereas Kevin attended Camp River Run for several years and now attends as a counselor. He is incredibly friendly. His nickname is Mayor Kevin because anywhere you go, he knows someone. And that is true. Now therefore, Mayor John G. Evans, Mayor of the City of Garden City, does hereby proclaim Monday, April 29th, 2024, as Mayor Kevin Sullivan Day, dated this 22nd day of April, 2024, by John G. Evans, Mayor.
We're going to have a short recess. If new officers would come up, we'll get a picture with Kevin. I'd get a picture with your teammates there. Okay. Next, we have Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. And I've had one of those dry throat things going on, so I'm putting the council president at work tonight. Thank you.
The Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the WCA has declared April 24th, 2024, as Denim Day. And whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual assault remains a serious issue in our society. And whereas harmful attitudes about sexual assault allow these crimes to persist and allow survivors to be revictimized. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed, concerning issues of assault. Concerning issues of assault. And whereas every 68 seconds, someone in America is sexually assaulted and approximately one in four women are raped during their lifetime. And whereas with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing incidence of this alarming and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas the City of Garden City is an important partner in the efforts of the WCA to educate about the true impact of rape and sexual assault. Now therefore, John G. Evans, Mayor of Garden City, Idaho, does hereby proclaim April 24th, 2024, as Denim Day in the City of Garden City, Idaho, dated this 22nd day of April, 2024, something John G. Evans, Mayor.
How many trees do we have here?
Okay, we have another proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation. I'm going to ask Councilmember Jacobs if he would read that.
Yeah, that's appropriate. Let's have a wine day one. Okay. This is the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Martin proposed a Nebraska Board of Aliment Culture special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, bringing us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, by John G. Evans, Mayor of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and take care of trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Witness thereof on this day of April 22nd.
Thank you. I'll look. Okay, you get it or I keep it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one? Yeah.
I believe we have a.
Okay. Just for the council's information, Friday morning at 10:00, Suzanne and I will be down at the Idaho State Museum where the state Arbor Day recognition is held. And we will represent the city as we get another year under our belt as a tree city, USA. So, and then we have a city planting at Pamela J. Beaumont Park there by the Boys and Girls Club at, looks like 2:30. So anybody that can, anybody that can make that. My calendar says 2:15. Maybe it was Friday. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Since I'm making announcements, we're honoring our police volunteers at noon at the police station on Friday. Thanking them for their service. Chief, can I invite the council to your volunteer luncheon since I just did? Okay. Yeah, Friday at noon. Okay. And
Is that the police station of Off-Center?
Police station. Yeah, yeah. Oh, good. So that'll be at the police station at noon on Friday in the training room there. Okay. Monthly staff reports are in the packet. Development Services Department Notice of Decisions. That is an action item.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have public counsel.
Yes.
Council members, does anyone have concerns or items they would like to pull off of the notice of decisions beginning on page 37?
No.
I do not.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we move on to Agenda Item G.
Okay, thank you. Item G1, this is a public hearing on S U B F Y 2022-7. This is the Quad Six subdivision. This is a final plat hearing, which is we're required to have a public hearing on final plats. This one was, as I understand it. Jenna, are you going to explain for me? So I don't do it, then you do it.
Mayor, I'm very happy to explain. I was just going to note that it looks like the applicant's online. If you wish to have him present the application.
Okay, is that Jaden? Okay. Okay. Does anyone on the council need to declare a conflict regarding this item?
No.
Okay, record reflects no conflicts. So our order tonight. What's Jaden's last name?
Snyder.
Snyder, okay. Mr. Snyder, you'll have an opportunity to present your application to the council. At the conclusion of your presentation, we'll have Ms. Thornborough address the council with a staff report. Following that, I'll open a public hearing, and anyone that wishes to testify regarding this application will have an opportunity to do so. At the conclusion of any public testimony, Mr. Snyder will have an opportunity to close out any final remarks, after which I'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it to the council for action. So with that, Mr. Snyder, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir, we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
We can really hear you, so congratulations.
You can, I'll talk quietly. Carry a big stick.
No, you can not speak up. Some of us like many are hearings. All right.
Perfect. Yes, Jane Schneider with Bronze Bow, working on behalf of the developer for this subdivision. I apologize, I didn't have anything to present this evening. We are proposing just the exact same project that we got approval from, from the preliminary plat hearing. It's 10 total lots, nine of them buildable, one common lot that serves as a private driveway. And generally, we just kept the exact same layout and put in the application now for final plat as we got further along with our construction drawings and easements and everything together. Maybe just a clarification on the packet. The packet says that it's seven residential lots and two common lots. I think that just may have been an error on the packet notification itself. But in the staff report itself, it does say that it's nine buildable lots and 10 lots, which was the same as was previously approved. But I'd be happy to answer any technical questions or other side of questions at all. But generally, we were happy with the staff report and in our agreement with everything said in there.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Snyder, that council? Have you seen no questions, Ms. Thornborough?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As Mayor Evans has introduced this application, the reason that you're hearing that tonight is both because of Garden City code and state statutes that require separated final plats to be reviewed by the city council. And Garden City code requires a public hearing. The staff did review and make and a recommendation that there has not been any changes since the preliminary plat. And so therefore, the staff did find it to be in substantial conformance, the required findings. And thank you to Mr. Schneider for clarifying the one typo that's in the agenda. But it is correct in the decision document and the staff report. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions of Ms. Thornborough. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing on S U B F Y 2022-7 and see if we have anybody. Nobody signed up here on, in person. Is there anyone joining us online that wishes to testify? If so, use the hand tool on your Zoom and let me know. Okay, let the record reflect that I don't see anyone either online or in person here that wishes to testify. With that, Mr. Snyder, do you have any closing remarks?
Other than just thank you for all the help, Jenna and Hannah have been great to work with and really appreciate working with them. And other than that, no, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. With that, I'll close the public hearing, turn it to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Based on the foregoing findings of fact, conclusions of law, and decision, I move to sustain the planning official's recommendation to grant application S U B F Y 2022-007 Quad Six.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion carries. Now we've losing the rest of our audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item two, this is an extension request of DSR F Y 2021-0011 at 208 East 33rd Street. I see Mr. Jones is online. Mr. Jones, would you like to address the council and present your extension request?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason Jones, 208 East 33rd Street. Yeah, I mean, just a simple request for the extension of the project we have down here on 33rd Street to add a little bit to what is in the documentation. We've obviously had some stormwater issues on planning with ACHD in the sidewalks, which is why we were before city council last month. You know, we're really just trying to find a solution to that. We've already submitted construction drawings and got red lines back. And that's the one engineering problem that we don't have a solution for yet. So that's really the big part of the delay.
Okay. Question to Mr. Jones?
So, Mr. Jones, so you have in the, now you want to revise, I guess, the reasoning for your extension because the reasoning says it's for the, you put in the application and two previous applications are in various phases of approval at different times because of legal action, which really isn't the case anymore.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I would say that should be revised at least a little bit. I mean, part of the reason we're here for another extension is just because of those delays. You know, we had construction drawings submitted last year. And when we received the red lines back, you know, the one solution we haven't been able to find it. So I would say mostly our delays now, at least why we haven't resubmitted those red lines, is just the ACHD delays.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Other questions?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And when, if this extension is granted, do you have an estimated timeline for completion?
Obviously, our hope is sooner than later. You know, the truth of the matter is, even right now, we don't have an engineering solution for the issue that we're having with stormwater. The reality is, we think maybe ACHD might allow us to do what our neighbors have done. But it seems like they want us to try to attempt to engineer a solution, which we did. But that solution didn't meet building code, so they, we basically didn't get kicked by ACHD. We got kicked by building code. So it's possible that this next go around, we'll propose what our neighbors did, which was no stormwater solution. And we'll see if ACHD will accept that. And we're just talking about the stormwater in the street, basically. So again, our hope would be sooner. I mean, the reality is that it's, every time you email ACHD, it's two weeks to get a reply. So we've got an email out to them now that we're just waiting to hear back to see if possibly they might look at what one of our nearby properties that just developed did and allow us to do the same thing.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Jones, good evening. In your submission, you said that changes to the code would not prevent the application from being approved again today. Does that mean, well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, do you think this application complies with the new parking code?
I think it's a tricky thing because what we've designed here is a live-work product. What I think I would say is this, that the size of it is not disproportionate to the new parking code if it was considered a residential project, which I think live-work products are. So it's kind of a tricky thing because each unit is, you know, this whole entire project is only 6,000 square feet. But that 6,000 square feet is actually seven smaller 900-square-foot residential live-work units. And so I think the tricky part is, should you make these tiny little live-work units have multiple parking spaces or not? And that's maybe the tricky part that's come up because of the removal of the live-work code. But I would say if you were building a 900-square-foot apartment, you would probably only, then I think we wouldn't meet parking code. That's kind of the, to answer that.
Thank you, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Okay. Anything further, Mr. Jones, before I turn it to the council?
Nope, I think that probably covers it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Hey, council, matters properly before the council.
So I'll, I'll start. Uh, I think. Speaking for myself. The, the concern is the, these, um, a project that uh, appears to be. Um, not moving forward and kind of open, open in perpetuity. Uh, in the initial submission, the reasoning was thin. Um, and I, and I, I keyed on the legal action, which as Councilmember Jacobs pointed out. Really doesn't uh, seem to be the case anymore. However, um, learning. Some additional things uh, today. Now, my, my thoughts are a little bit tempered. Uh, does anyone have other thoughts about that?
Council President, my, my question is, should the documentation reflect the, the situation? Because the, you're absolutely right. I looked at this application. I looked at the, the application for extension. The only thing that I could find different was. Is the email address and I think one phone number. So, um, I, I. I came very confused on why we would be considering something with no change in a basis for reconsideration. I do think that the documentation should reflect what Mr. Jones is reporting as the change in situation and the basis that this should be considered. And that's kind of. Where I'm at right now.
So we just true that up, I think. Jase, I think that also the definition of why you want, just probably needs to be updated. To reflect that it's really because of A C H D engineering issues versus. Legal action, you know, so I would just change that. I don't, but then we just sync it up. So. I would agree that if that takes me.
That can be done.
Uh, Council President. I guess my only comment on this is I would hope, I would hope that we would start to see. Um, more progress on this project um, in the coming year. I. I. Certainly leaning towards granting this extension uh, tonight, but um. I would sure hope to see progress on this this year. Would be my. Con- contribution to the conversation.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As, as a matter of um. Procedural semantics, uh, do we need to re-agenda this and notice it after um? The applicant re- uh, renews the application with and updates it with reasons?
The record's always important in these matters and we don't have a written record that's reflecting what I'm hearing the council say is justification to, to grant the extension. So, uh, if what I'm hearing is that. Because the engineering issue with the storm during, and Mr. Jones, you can interrupt me if I get some of this wrong, please, but. Uh, that the engineering issues uh, related to dealing with the stormwater and challenges. Uh, with getting a response from the Ada County Highway District is certainly. Uh, one reason. The other thing I heard, I thought I heard Mr. Jones say although the legal issues are no longer issues today. It put a cloud on any progress really for the first two extensive, first two years. So, um. Uh, I. I put my developer hat on, I can understand why you didn't see any progress during that period. So even though the times lapse, perhaps. Uh, there's. There could be some consideration that. Uh, it doesn't properly represent. Uh, the circumstances. Uh, but I would suggest that, uh. That this application get amended so that we have a. Paper trail and we don't set a precedent that we're granting extensions when there's been no. Change or no action or no progress on a particular project in the future. So. Uh, so my suggestion would be, uh. To, uh. Uh, hold this matter open. For two weeks. I don't think we need to renotice. Uh, anybody that's interested has an opportunity tonight. We're just going to hold the matter open and continue this discussion. And we'll expect an amended application from Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor?
Does that work, Jenna? Yes, okay.
Is it, um, so I just have a, a question for our legal counsel?
Sure.
So, um, Mr. Wadums, are, by doing that, holding this open for two more weeks, are we up against any bright line deadlines?
Mayor and Council President, I don't know, uh, exactly when this current extension is set to expire.
I think I can answer that. I think it's May tenth, so I think it should be good.
If, if that's true, and I, I believe that to be true, then I think it should be fine that we.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Wadums.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to, um, a- as it relates to the extension of D S. Our F Y twenty twenty one dash zero zero eleven, I move to hold this agenda item open for a date certain of two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, we do have five Mondays in April, so it will actually be three weeks.
Three weeks. Look at your calendar, Jason, and see if three weeks.
That might be, I mean, it might be after the extension date, but I think it's probably the date of the request, so.
I, I think since the matter's under consideration actively will.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's a legal term called tolling. I, I think that probably that expiration is told while the council is considering what to do about it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, uh, would you give us the date?
Would be, uh, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, so. Uh, Mr. Jones, if you can amend your application and get that back in in plenty of time, uh, for the council packet for May thirteenth?
Will do. Thank you, appreciate it.
You betcha, okay. Uh, so I've got a motion to clarify the motion. The motion is to hold this item open uh, to a date certain of May thirteenth. Uh, did I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Um. Move on to item G three. This is a resolution to amend Garden City's record retention schedule citing stuff. Uh, working on some language, huh?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, after the previous meeting and uh, Councilmember Jorgensen's comments. I did search through the document and did find the words significant and strategic. In uh, certain sections and as the memo describes, really the, the word significant does become a bit ambiguous and as we've learned in our legal. Uh, proceedings, uh, we don't like that. So. A lot of times it was referring to a significant policy or a significant procedure. So rather than leaving the, the word significant in there, just removed it. So we keep the policy or the procedure. Uh, rather than trying to define it as significant. And then the couple of uh, sections where the word strategic was used. It was an example, uh, so the, there was a section that would talk about a, a, a document that needed to be retained. And it would say including but not limited to a strategic plan, a strategic update. So just took those examples out and again, just left the wording to. To uh, be simple and say you keep. You keep these, these types of documents rather than giving examples of what they might be. Okay, that was good, good cleanup.
Any questions as staff on that? Okay.
No, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it and I, I thought read very well with the changes.
Very good. Would you like to formalize that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution one one seven two dash twenty four to amend Garden City's record retention schedule.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business, no new business. Uh, we do need to have an executive session tonight as shown and uh. We. Will reconvene Mr. Wadums for possible action or?
Please.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move that we move into executive session, uh, in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four. Dash two one six sub one F. To communicate with legal counsel for the public agency, discuss legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation. After which we will reconvene with a possible decision.
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, for those joining us online, uh, we're going to. Do whatever Lisa does to. To, uh.
Put the meeting on hold.
Put the meeting on hold and we'll reconvene here in a few minutes. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council President Page, so.
I, I move to reject Applebee's settlement and pursue legal action.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda this evening. Don't entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Got a, got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.